Okay, we'll bring this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is a reading and approval of minutes from the October 8, 2024 Regular Council Meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second. May I have a second? Is there any questions or comments? Okay, great. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Okay, the minutes are approved. Thank you, council. Next item is a reading and approval of minutes from the October 10th, 2024 workshop. This workshop was regarding municipal league training. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
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 Thank you. Any questions or comments about the workshop? Okay, great. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you, council. And the last, a reading and approval of minutes from the October 15th workshop. This workshop was regarding the 10-year comp plan and the Pinecrest Industrial Park. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions or comments about that workshop? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. All right, minutes are approved. Thank you, council. So the next item on the agenda is the, we're supposed to have guest speaker Andrew Pennick from Woodrow Wilson High School. He's the athletic director, but he informed me not too long ago that he wasn't going to be able to make it because Woodrow is currently trying to qualify for this soccer tournament, the state tournament, which will be here hosted by the city of Beckley and has been for several years, I don't know, 20 years? I think he's told me that one other school has hosted since 2021, so I didn't know that. I mean, I knew we had sponsored for a while, but I was impressed that we'd been doing it for that long. So he says, Mayor Neal in Beckley City Council, my name is Andrew Pennick and I'm the athletic director at Woodrow Wilson High School. I would first like to apologize that I'm not able to physically be at the meeting tonight, but I'm working at the Paul Klein YMCA complex as the administrator for the AAA Region 3 Section 2 Boys Sectional semifinal game. As you know, Beckley's been home to the West Virginia SSAC State High School Soccer Tournament for over 20 years. When I took over the job as athletic director in 2022, I also inherited the honor of being co-director of the tournament with Dave Lariva. Dave Lariva works with the West Virginia Soccer Association and is a great asset to the sport, to our community. This tournament has brought a multiple people, multitude of people from across the state to Beckley to watch the tournament, but also stay in hotels and visit businesses while they are here. It brings me much joy knowing that our city is a showcase to those coming to watch the tournament. With this, however, comes the financial burden that is inherent whenever a major event is put on. As cost of services increases, so does our budget. For at least the past five years, the city of Beckley has been a financial sponsor, partner and supporter of the tournament. We are again asking for your financial sponsorship of $2,000. I guess it's the amount that we've given previous years. This money goes toward paying for the food for the players, volunteers, match officials, and hospitality rooms. It also supports the security and police force that serve during the tournament. The sponsorship aids in ambulance service for players and those attending, hotel accommodations, trainers, event staff signage, and general operational costs. In other words, your sponsorship goes a long way. While we have numerous other sponsors for one of the greatest state tournaments, we need your support as well and look forward to partnership and bringing another fantastic tournament to soccer fans from around the state. With your sponsorship, the city of Beckley will be added to our sponsorship banners and will be advertised during pre-game and during each game as a sponsor of the state tournament. As the saying goes, it takes a village. The West Virginia State High School Soccer Tournament literally takes everyone in our community, come together and make it happen. I am thankful that the city of Beckley has been supportive in the past and hopeful that our partnership will continue into the future as we bid for the tournament to return after this year. Anything worth having is not easy and I will be the first and definitely not the last to tell you that. That the tournament makes a tremendous amount of work, but I also will tell you that it is very rewarding to see young people come together and competing, laying everything they have on the line over the course of a few days. I'm asking that the city of Beckley help financially with our goal and that we can accomplish a great tournament where we showcase not only the sport of soccer, but our community, businesses, people, and ultimately, together, we can score. Andrew Pennick. So we have done this in the past, $2,000. I did talk to him extensively about this and, you know, I do know for a fact it brings a lot of business into our area because I have the beef turkey store out there on Harper Road. We always had a spike that weekend when the kids were all over the state, families would come in, stay for like two or three nights. So I can personally say that I have benefited from this state soccer tournament. Like I said, we usually give $2,000, but I don't know if it's different this year, but he highlighted the silver package, which is $2,500. Way less expensive than a diamond sponsorship, which is $10,000, but $2,500. The one thing that I asked Andrew Pennick that was important is like, you know, what does, if we sponsor this and we give $2,000 or $2,500, what does the city, what do we get out of this, you know? How do we showcase? And talking to him, I ended up talking to Sergeant Bailey, I think he's a Community Resource Officer, is that correct? He's in charge of the DARE program and I and Jessica talked about, you know, can we use some of that opioid money that's set aside? To me, this would be something, in my opinion, something of worthy cause. I mean, you're hosting a state tournament. Sergeant Bailey had said that they would set up a canopy, a tent, that they'd give them a chance to pass out literature, to, you know, have cookies and other small snacks, maybe hot chocolates and stuff like that, and get people in our community that are there to stop by and kind of hang out with some of the officers, city council. I thought I'd go for at least one of the two days. It's on a Thursday and Saturday. I believe it's November 9th, 11th, but I'm not a hunch or sure, but it is coming up pretty soon. So having said all that, may I have a motion to approve the $2,500 contribution to be given for sponsorship level?
So moved.
To the state soccer tournament? And then is there any questions or comments from anybody? Jessica, I know you were checking with the state if you want to talk about that.
I did check with the state attorney general and they did approve if we were to do a banner or something of that means to promote the opioid situation. Yes, we absolutely can use the opioid funds for that.
Great. So you did get that person to be talked?
Yes.
Wow, that's awesome. I wasn't sure if we turned that up yet.
Yep.
Okay, so did you want to raise the amount?
I mean, I just see the silver sponsorship that he highlighted was $2,500. I guess every other time it's come out of the general fund, but that's approved through the state.
In the past years, last year was the first year we paid $2,000. In the previous years, we paid 1,000. He had requested 2,000 on his paperwork, so, but it's up to you guys what you want to contribute.
And I know Billy Trump said when we had the Babe Ruth teams going to Illinois, don't we have an allowance of $1,000 apiece and then we all contribute 500?
I think you guys have already used half of your money there.
We used 500 of them.
We used 500 of them. We have 500 left.
Right, but this way it comes straight up the settlement.
Yep.
You know, and yeah, I thought it was pretty neat talking to him and, you know, Andrew Pennick's like, listen, we'll give you the platform. I asked, I said, what banner, what was our message on the banners? He can't really remember, but I thought it'd be cool, you know, to have stuff about the DARE program and, but also we should have a banner out there on the fence that just welcomes people to the city of Beckley. I mean, it's a branding opportunity for the city of Beckley, so, you know, we still got like two weeks or something like that to kind of iron out all the details, but, you know, I think we just kind of take advantage of the opportunity. And hopefully, Woodrow Wilson will be one of the teams, one of the 16 teams in the tournament. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Mayor, I do have something. We have had other people ask for opioid money. Is that setting us up for that? I mean, I know that it's an allowable thing, but for other people that have done that, I'm just, I mean.
Yeah, great point.
Yeah. It does, does open the door for others then at that point.
The only thing about the opioid money that I see is I think, I think we need to have the workshop and actually figure out how we spend it. Personally, I think we just maybe use this out of the general fund and then, I mean, Officer Bailey's still willing to go and then that way we can have a designated plan of how we're going to spend the opioid money before we dabble into, is my opinion.
Since others have been in line to get some of that.
Would it be a problem to spend $2,500 out of the general fund?
We could afford to do that.
I'll make a motion that we spend $2,500 out of the general fund just because, and then we'll, until we get, until we get everything lined up on the opioid money, I don't want to start spending out of until we have our designated plan that we spoke about.
Right, this would be the first thing and we kind of knew that, you know, my point was like, you know, you're hosting a state tournament.
No, I totally understand.
But I totally get that too, you know, because we have talked before about having a workshop and figuring out how much of that money, you know, you wanted to use each year, you know, and then what you want to, what you want the money to go to prevention or whatever, so.
That's my personal opinion. I mean, I'll make that motion.
Well, it was already a motion, I think, on the floor for the $2,000. Then I just asked a question. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I just made a motion.
Okay, so may I have a motion to amend? A motion to, instead of using the opioid money, just taking out of the general fund?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, so it is amended. So Mr. File, let me ask, do we still vote again?
Yes.
Okay. So now may I have a motion to approve the $2,500 contribution to be the sponsor of this year's state soccer tournament hosted by the city of Beckley?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, so moved. Thank you, council. All right, next is the appointment and approval of Case Polin to the Board of Directors for the Beckley Sanitary Board. I did not know if Case Polin is here today.
I haven't seen him.
What about Jeremiah Johnson is here today?
No, one last one here.
Okay. Well, I was going to let them comment if they were here, but so again, may I have a motion to appoint Case Polin to the Board of Directors for the Beckley Sanitary Board?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
If you want me to explain very briefly.
Yeah.
We have John Sodaski, who has been the engineer, serving on the sanitary board for a number of years. He's been a tremendous contributor to the sanitary board and he is ready to retire from that position. So that is why we have checked to see and asked Case Polin if he would be interested in serving. He's very interested in doing that. He is an engineer by trade and he also is a professor at Western Union University Tech. He's very excited about this. He's been attending meetings. He, I think is going to be a very good addition to the sanitary board and Jeremiah is very much in favor of this appointment.
Any other questions or comments?
I agree with Mr. File. I think Case would be really good for this. He has a passion for the community and like you said, he's a professor at Western Union Tech and he's showed interest in it, so I'm in agreement.
Okay, great. Well then, all in favor of approving Case Polin to the Board of Directors for the Beckley Sanitary Board? Say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, council. Next item is the first reading of an ordinance for the 10-year comprehensive plan. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. File to elaborate a little bit more on this.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, tonight will be the first reading on this ordinance. This is an ordinance in which we're requesting city council to adopt the comprehensive plan. It's titled, "The Beckley 2045 Comprehensive Plan." It's an update of actually the 2014 plan and there has been a committee that's been working on this for a number of months. There have been a number of public hearings, public meetings concerning this. There's been a tremendous amount of time and effort put in by one Ms. Angela King, who's kind of headed this up for the city of Beckley. She is here tonight if anybody has any questions. And tonight, what we would need to do is for council to accept from the planning commission, their recommendation that this plan be approved. The planning commission met earlier today and they unanimously recommended that city council accept this plan. There will now be a public hearing held by city council, which should take place the first meeting of November. And it'll be a public hearing here in the chambers and it'll be an opportunity, another opportunity for the public to speak about this comprehensive plan. And so tonight though is the first step and we're asking for a motion to adopt this comprehensive plan. There will be a second reading and a public hearing as stated, the first meeting of November.
Okay. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So moved. Thank you, council. All right, next item is the opening of bids for the milling and paving of G Street from the intersection of South Canals Street to the intersection of Candace Street. So now I will open the bids. I think we got two of them, is that correct, Jessica?
You're opening the bids. I just want to thank Pam and I know Denise wants to thank you also.
Yes.
Because she lives on G Street.
Okay, the first bid is from AAA Paving and Ceiling Incorporated and the total cost $51,975. And then the second bid is from Southern West Virginia Paving and the amount of $78,200.
Now, is this right beside, this is right beside the elementary school, correct? It said that the contractors not hold up their obligation of fixing.
Yes.
Okay. To just finish, this is just to finish the rest, so they fixed what they had messed up?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't been over there in a few weeks, so thank you.
Yeah. And again, the bids will be reviewed by the Director of Board of Public Works for two city council members persons at large and the interim recorder treasurer for possible award at a future meeting. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion and action by city council on ordinance authorizing city of Beckley to convey 131.47 acres of real estate, more or less located in the Pinecrest Industrial Park in Beckley, Raleigh County, to the Raleigh County Commission for the purpose of economic development. Mr. File, is there anything you want to comment on this?
Just very briefly, at the last meeting, you may recall that there was a motion eventually made after some discussion to basically postpone this ordinance and they asked that a workshop be held by city council prior to this matter being brought back before council. A workshop was scheduled and was held on, I believe it was October the 15th. I think it was a very productive workshop. I know the coach from Woodrow Wilson High School was there and he certainly spoke, as did Jim Sheasley, and I believe Ms. Jenna Belcher also spoke. And council had an opportunity to discuss in depth this matter and so that did take place, so now it is back on the agenda. So it's up to council now if they would like to act on this, on this ordinance. This ordinance, I will remind everyone, first came to council, I believe it was on September the 10th and at that time it passed on first reading. It came back for second reading and a public hearing on, I believe it was September the 24th and there was no motion at that time made. It was read by title, but there was no motion, no action taken whatsoever at that time. And then, so it did come back on another agenda, which would have been the agenda of October the 8th. At that time, there was a motion made to postpone this matter until after a workshop was held by council. That did occur, so tonight, this is the next council meeting following the workshop, so it is on the agenda. It is open to council to act if it chooses. Mayor?
Mayor, have some items.
I think if there's a debate or anything like that, we'll get it to second.
I have some amendments to go forward.
Well, we got to still bring it, so, yeah, wait till we get to that.
Well, I have amendments to do before we go forward. That would be something that I have for.
I still have to start this before anything.
Right, this matter needs to be, I believe, on the floor before it can be amended. So it would take a motion to, excuse me, it would take a motion at this time to adopt this ordinance on second reading and a second, once that's done, then it can be open to discussion and can be open to amendments.
Okay, so at this point, may I have a motion to approve the transfer of the 131.47 acres of real estate over to the Raleigh County Commission for Economic Development?
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I have some amendments before we go forward. These are similar to the transfer agreement and these, I printed these off for all of our elected officials, from Ms. Bullock and Councilman Buchanan and Councilman Williams, Councilwoman Dingus, Councilwoman Coats, and Mayor Neal. Got yours? We had items in front of us before Pinecrest transfer the property to us and these are similar, if not mirror, what we had for Pinecrest. Amendment one is if any parts of this transfer agreement are not met and upon demand of the common council of the city of Beckley, the Raleigh County Commission will transfer the property to the city of Beckley for economic development. All improvements and leases will also be transferred. Any debts incurred by the Raleigh County Commission related to this property will not transfer from the Raleigh County Commission to the city of Beckley. And the purpose is to provide a check to ensure development occurs in accordance with this agreement. This is in accordance with existing covenants contained in the deeds.
Excuse me, do you think that we might have, I can go make some copies for the three of us. We don't, we don't have a copy.
I felt like, I felt, Anne, that this should be for people that were elected officials, but if you want a copy, I can surely give you a copy.
I mean, I'll be happy to.
We have a copy. Also, I might point out, actually, the charter requires that any ordinance or any amendments be presented to the city council, to the city attorney prior to it being presented.
Oh, okay. Mr. File, I'd be very happy to. And I have, Anne, I have one. I have, yes, Jessica, you have? There you go. So may I proceed, Mr. File, since now you have a copy?
Thank you.
Okay. So I guess we needed a motion on amendment one, mayor?
I mean, exactly what, are you trying to amend?
What I just read.
At the last second, but you just, I mean, we've not had time with witness over anything and I don't know if that's.
Well, these are things, these were things that were also exactly the same items that mirror with the.
What are you asking to amend?
I want to make sure.
With the transfer of the property from the city to the Raleigh County?
It just, it states everything, Mayor Neal.
I want to hear your words. What do you exactly, what's your amendment that you're trying to, what do you want to give?
There are several amendments. There are, there are actually, when you go over all of these, there are several to ensure that our constituents in the city are going to, if we're giving this to the county commission and it's several millions of dollars of property, that we need to make sure that we've done our due diligence and make sure that what the, what the Pinecrest gave to us, that we're given right back to the county commission to make sure that they are ensuring that we're going to get the same thing that we were, that we voted upon.
Well, I might point out, the ordinance actually authorizes the city of Beckley to convey this property to the county commission, but it is going to be subject to an agreement that we will be working out with, with the county commission. So there will be terms certainly in that agreement that must be approved by, by council and by the county commission. I haven't seen these before. I don't know if these, these may be good, may not be.
Well, those mirror, those mirror exactly what we were given when we accepted the property from Pinecrest in the very, very beginning. You can see that they're, they're pretty similar.
With the transfer not already hold the county as reliable as we were, Mr. File, like aren't they technically with the covenants and the deeds, they're under the same stipulations as we currently are, correct?
Right, that will be part of the transfer, part of the agreement that will be worked out.
So at that point, at that point, if there's, since everyone had to follow that, there's really no sense in doing the amendments because they're going to do the exact same, they're going to be under the same stipulations we were, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And these, as I said, I haven't read these, but these will most likely be very similar to what will be in the agreement that will have to be signed off by the county commission and by the city of Beckley at the time of the transfer of the property. And you're stating you want to amend, I'm not sure.
I just want to ensure that everything, everything, I mean, that's why I just, I brought in a copy for everybody that was elected so that we could see it. I'm sorry that it was last minute, but oftentimes we get budget revisions at last minute that we have to approve, not to throw anybody under the bus, but, you know, we just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. I mean, we're, if we're giving the property away to the county commission, we need to ensure that we're doing the right thing for, for our constituents that have put us in, and those are tough, tough questions and tough decisions and I just feel like it's, needs to be brought forward, that we want to do the same. Ron, I know you're shaking your head.
I have shaken my head.
Well, I mean, I want to make sure, I want to make sure that the county is, is going to do exactly what, what we did when we accepted the property from Pinecrest.
Yeah, I agree with that. I do hear what you're saying, but the point is they've been working on this for two years, well before my time, with you all.
That's true.
I mean, back two years ago, March 2022, you all, again, before my time, that length of time, a couple of the others.
I understand.
So as we're talking about the workshop, we've had, we've had the due diligence, we've had the workshops, we've discussed everything that could be discussed, we had the attorney that drew up the lease.
But I think that.
That basically said that, you know, we will be sued by Pinecrest if we do not transfer this property for economic development. So, wait a minute, so, I mean, I don't want to see our city get sued. I think it's pretty irresponsible for us to sit up here and put the city in a lawsuit when.
Well, according to some of these amendments, I mean, I mean, they're talking about that it can't be sold, leased or otherwise transferred to any business owned and part of, a family member of the commission or a council member. There can't be construction done by a family member or a council member. I mean, are those, I mean, those are kind of, seem like they're pointing towards one person, don't they?
Yeah, well, I mean.
These are not, these are not really.
Someone that's never done work for the city, by the way.
Quite a bit of this, quite a, a good number of these amendments are not something that's been contained in any prior agreement. These are basically changing quite a bit of, of the intent of the original agreement. You know, you've got, well, you've got several items in here that.
Well, you don't want to put yourself in a bad position. I mean, showing that.
I think there's a motion and a second on the floor. Can we vote on that?
There needs to be, once there's a motion, a second on any amendment, if there's, there's an amendment that, I assume, Ms. Hunter, you were making an amendment one, is that what you're doing? Is that starting now?
That was the first one.
You want all the amendments at one time?
Well, I was like, well, I was wanting to read all of those at the same time, but since you weren't able, since I just brought them to you, but I didn't, I thought I needed to give them to elected officials.
Well, to amend, let me point out, what has to occur now is there has to be a motion to, to approve the amendments and, and right now, the only motion that's on the floor is a motion to approve second reading of the ordinance, which authorizes the city of Beckley to transfer the property to the county commission, but it's going to be subject to an agreement that will be worked out between the county and the city.
The second reading on September 24th, that didn't get a motion, that was your.
Right, there's been a second, we can do a second reading. We've already had the public hearing on this. We had quite a lengthy public hearing.
Even though we started, Mr. File, I'm sorry. Even though we started over, does that mean that we could have a first reading and a second reading and another public hearing? Since it was, since it was dead and we brought it back up, would that not be feasible?
No, we are not starting over. This is, this is the same ordinance that was presented on September the 10th.
I just want to ensure that all of our bases are covered going forward so that we, the city's going to get what they.
On your, I'm just pointing out, on your amendments, there will need to be a vote taken on the amendments, whether to approve the amendments. They can either be voted up or down.
Yeah.
So, but it has to, each amendment will have to have a second.
Okay, go ahead.
The question, I mean, the amendments that she's saying, if I'm hearing her right, those amendment would be discussed between the parties after the property has been approved, all disapproval approved by Pinecrest and everybody that's involved, if I'm hearing it right. Am I hearing that right?
Yes, what, what will happen is, there's already been some discussion with the attorney for the county, the county commission, Mr. Root. He is aware that, that there are, there is an agreement that would be expected, and that there's reference made in our ordinance, that there will be, there will be an agreement between the county commission and the City of Beckley. Currently, there is no agreement between the county commission. The agreement that Beckley is operating under currently is with Pinecrest.
Correct.
So, so we will have to have an agreement with the party that we're transferring the property to, which is the Raleigh County Commission.
Okay.
And so, yes, there will be that. Now, some of these, some of these amendments, I'm confident, will not be in an agreement.
And that'll give everybody a chance to look at it. So we just need to vote on the motion.
You need, need to vote right now on, if there's a motion and a second to amend, that needs to be voted on. If it's voted down, then we move on with the second reading, the vote on the second reading of the ordinance to approve the ordinance.
So, do you want me to make a motion to amend all seven amendments, or one at a time, or?
I think it was the first one.
There's twelve.
Twelve of them? All right. May I have a motion to amend, amend the action? Okay, so no action taken on that. So now is it back to, any other questions or comments before we vote? Does anybody else have anything they want to comment on?
I'd just like to say, this is strong council, and I know we act strong for the city. We're not going to vote the same on this. But I'm proud to be here. I'm proud to be here, to lead the city. I mean, we're known, we're known as the medical hub, education hub, retail hub, restaurant hub. We just got to get more jobs here. We got to be a job hub instead of a restaurant hub, retail hub. I mean, we got all these education centers and educational hub. We got so many universities sitting here. And we, the kids stay here, they go to universities here, train them, and they leave. And this is just an opportunity for us to keep our young workforce, which we say our children, our greatest resources here, or give them the opportunity to get to college. So, in that song Tracy Lawrence always says, "Time marches on, the only thing that changes is change."
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Yep, any other questions? You know, I will say this too. I, I think Councilman Buchanan is absolutely right. You know, I was at the meet the candidates a couple of mornings ago. Tony Martin, some of the other people that were running for office here in a couple of weeks, they spoke. And a lot of the questions directed to them, and a lot of the response, if they weren't asked a question, they talked about, and it's how do you keep your young professionals here? How do you keep your top talent? How do you, and they're going to go where the opportunities are. And I certainly have respect for Coach Barbera. I have respect for the kids that come up and spoke, and, you know, how articulate they were, how much passion they had for the, I get all that. You know, but the sad reality, they're probably top of their class at Woodrow Wilson, they're probably going to go to college and be successful. But the sad reality is, they'll probably be successful somewhere other than Beckley, West Virginia. And we've got to figure out a way to reverse the trend. You know, I was talking to Fred Persinger the other day on the radio show, and when Kim Buchanan, myself, Cody Rudy's dad, was at Woodrow Wilson, the eighty-eight to ninety, we were the second biggest high school in the state. Fred Persinger told me this, like, right now, we're like the sixteenth. That's a huge decline. And, and I just think it's important to, to, to look. And when you have an opportunity, like we saw at the workshop, that businesses that this will bring in, the jobs it's going to provide, you know, you really have to look at what's best for the city. So, anybody else have anything they want to comment on?
It would be great, what's best for the city is for us to retain that property and let those that are here to be able to develop that, because that's the city property.
We were against that just a few months ago, when we weren't going to get a ball in court.
Well, and then I ask about...
We have one hundred and thirty-one point forty-seven acres. And I am quite sure that all of the adults can come together as stakeholders and come up with an agreement. And I'm hoping that Mr. Barbera could be able to name, you have done a lot of work over there. And I know you have, that you will be able to still name that property after, I think you said your parents, right? And I think as stakeholders, I think we are adults, and I believe we can come together and make this happen. Like I said, it is one hundred and thirty-one point forty-seven acres. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else want to comment? Okay. All in favor of transferring the property to the Raleigh County Commission for the purpose of economic development, please say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Vote, council. Thank you, council. We'll move on to, next item on the agenda is old business. Does anyone have any old business?
Yes, mayor, I do.
Councilman Wes.
Last, at the last council meeting, myself and Ms. West didn't end the council meeting that great. And Ms. West, I owe you, I owe you apology for my acting from last meeting. And I hope you accept my apology.
I think you should.
It's in there.
Okay, anybody else?
This has been discussed before, recognizing citizens. I know that Mr. Mosley has talked about it, and I would like us to try to come up with something. Maybe each of us in our ward can have certificates to grant, and somebody can apply to memorialize as these two, or recognize these citizens. It is important, it draws us together as a community. So maybe we could discuss that at a later time. I don't want to extend this meeting. So if we could maybe come up with something, just so that we could recognize these citizens, that's important.
Great, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, on, on that topic, maybe something like we could think of is, every year, maybe, you know, we do at the beginning of our physical year, so July one, say we have open, people can send in family members, friends can send in something to us as council members, have some kind of form that we can do it. And then say, July one, the council, like, has, like, I mean, not really Spirit of Beckley because that's already a thing, but some kind of certificate in that, you know, way to highlight, highlight, you know, these people that have done so many great things within the city. But maybe that's something we can think of, and find some way, you know, people to enter names and suggestions, and then we could all collectively come together and pick one person to honor, and, you know, maybe even do like something in here with them, and have their picture in a little bio of what they've done.
Or even just give the family a certificate.
You have a certificate, have them come up. No, I agree.
Give them a key to the city.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
I believe in the past, there have been people recognized that way, and it was called the Outstanding Citizens Award. So it's something, something they could work on.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to new business. Anyone have any new business?
Mayor, I just wanted to mention, Reverend Walter Leach mentioned to me that he would like to have the, like a marker on his street, where, on Vice Street, where his church is, St. Paul Baptist Temple. I told him that I didn't think the name could be changed because everyone on the street would have to agree. So he was just saying if he could have a marker there, that that's Reverend Walter Leach, his, his corner, or whatever, however way that we could put it there, that he would really appreciate that. I just told him I'd mention it to you.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Chief, thank you for what you and the detectives are doing to help with the situation and investigating what happened at Sunset. The other day, I was going up Harper Road, and there was a bloodhound being led. It was, no one knew what was going on at that time, but I guess they were tracking the scent of, that was just to see that in action. So thank you, because I know that's out of city limits, and I appreciate the resources and trying to, that is just a horrible incident. I mean, it's horrific to see what occurred up there, so, thank you.
Going on that topic, you know, we, we, we really got to come together and get some ordinances or something. Me and my wife went to Charlotte area. We stayed in Mooresville this weekend. It was our anniversary last week, so we did a little getaway from the baby. And, but we bounced around, all around Mooresville, Charlotte, Concord, and I promise you, I've seen two people on the street corner with the sign in all those big areas. You can't go down three stoplights in Beckley without seeing that. So I mean, I mean, there's no reason, we got to figure out, well, I think we know what the problems are, we got to take care of the problems and do better for our city. I mean, you have, what happened at the cemetery is a disgrace, and I'm sure that there was a fire right up the road that we're all aware of. I'm sure that's probably in play as well. I mean, and all the other abandoned houses have caught on fire in the last few years within our city. We got to take control of our city and get it back. And like I said, I, I was just, I paid attention, and I was like, I know there has to be, there has to be more people in these big areas than Beckley, but there wasn't. I seen two people in two and a half days driving around. So we, we got to do something. We got to come together.
We do need to go ahead and enact the safety patrol that we talked about, and pair up with United Way to do other ways to give.
Yeah, we got to get the ball rolling.
I would like to invite the mayor from Parkersburg and have a, a Zoom meeting with him, what he did there with retired police officers that are on the street with people. Yeah.
That was Parkersburg? You did the retired mayor?
No, he is the mayor.
Current mayor, retired officer, sorry.
Retired officers. Mayor Tom Joyce has a great program. He was on the Hoppy Critical Show a couple of months ago. I reached out and spoke with him, and that seemed to help Parkersburg. So, I'll go forward with that. And also, I like what Trina Diesel brought forward.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely. Anne, you got any updates?
Well, I want to check with Angelo about the comprehensive plan. Is there going to be a draft at the reception area for the public to come and look at for the public hearing?
Yes, there's two copies out there now that you just can't take it with you, but you're one of them from the lookback route. But it's also on our website. You go to the City of Beckley's webpage, big banner right there that says twenty-four comprehensive plan, and click on it and it'll bring you to the draft.
Will copies be made available to the public there? Not everyone is on a computer.
Is that, yeah?
It should be public information. Or is it...
I think, yes. Oh, absolutely. We can, we can furnish copies.
Yeah.
Somebody wants a copy.
I just wanted the public to know that if they want to stop by and, and look at it here, it is available at City Hall.
And I don't know how it figured out, but we did put it on our Facebook page as well. But it's available on our web page right now. We just put it out for physical copy here in the office today. So, and there will be something in the paper about it as well.
Good, that's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, thank you, Angelo. Anybody else have any new business? Remember, we do not have another meeting before Election Day, so, two weeks from today?
I guess I should, I should give kudos. It's been a while. You know, we had the water problem at Wildwood. My dad always talked about giving orchids and onions to people, whether they deserve them. Nobody deserves any onions. I just want to say thank you to Donnie at Code and Jeannie, Mr. Wooton at the Water Company, Captain Codlin, am I leaving anybody out? Oh, the State Fire Marshal who came. Those were the people responsible for getting the water back on at Wildwood. It would have been a lot longer time if everybody, all those departments had not worked together. So I just wanted to say thank you. That's in my word. That affected a lot of people that needed help. So I thank you.
Great. Anything else? Now that we'll move on to public comments.